Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Doug Wishart.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Wishart. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I did want to take a moment to recognize someone who was a longstanding pillar and member of our community. He served on our NACAN Transit Authority. We recently received the news that we lost Mr. Mike Harris. Mike served for many years, I believe almost 20 years, on the NACAN Transit Authority and was an invaluable member of our Westland community and also a longstanding member advocating for those who are differently abled and with disabilities as well. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Mike Harris and we're certainly going to miss his many contributions here to the NACAN Transit Authority and the city of Westland. Just a moment of silence, please, for Mr. Harris. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Hart is absent, excused. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
Accord, Miss President.
Okay. We will begin tonight's meeting with a special announcement and presentation, receiving a legislative update from our state representative, Dylan Wegella.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor and Council. State Representative Dylan Wegella, District 26, Southeast Westland. You know, districts are still relatively new, a couple of years now, so we are southeast of Wayne and Cherry Hill in Westland and then Olive Garden City, Olive Ingster, and part of Romulus. First, just want to come first time I've been this year, so there's been a change in the House in terms of the power balance from a 56-54 Democrat-Republican layout to a 58-52 Republican majority chamber. And along with that, so far this year, we've been getting a couple of things done. One bipartisan improvement is with our enhancement grants. There's some new rules to where enhancement grants that legislators sponsor, one, they have to have a sponsor before they go into the budget or get voted on. So there's a little more vetting and transparency there, but also there's two other requirements that enhancement grants cannot go to nonprofits that haven't been in existence for three years or 36 months, and then also they can't go to for-profit entities. I voted yes on that. It was actually a unanimous, rare unanimous vote in the House. I'm on new committees this year. The two, I'm on three committees. I'm on the General Oversight Committee and I, you know, proud to announce that I'm actually was named Vice Chair of the Corporate Subsidies Oversight Committee. If you are aware, I've been a critic of how the state has been sending taxpayer dollars to for-profit corporations, so I'll get to work really closely on that over the next two years. I'm also on the Subcommittee on Oversight for Weaponization of State Government. And, you know, just heard earlier today, you know, unless something changes on Thursday, I'll be having one of my bills heard in committee. Me and Representative Kara, who's a Republican, have worked together to introduce a bill package that would ban legislators from signing non-disclosure agreements in areas that deal with legislation that comes before the House. So, related to these corporate subsidy deals, we have legislators who will sign non-disclosure agreements with the state of Michigan and companies, which will bar them from actually talking to their communities about said legislation and even alerting them of such. So, proud to be working on that. I'm hoping the committee goes well and we can get that moved out of there. One more thing I'll mention, this is the big topic at Lansing right now, and it's a little complicated, but I'll try to explain it in under two minutes. Right now, we are dealing with the One Fair Wage laws that are going into effect. So, in 2018, people gathered thousands of signatures for the One Fair Wage Ballot Initiative, which, you know, without going into every little detail, would raise the minimum wage, would eliminate the subminimum wage in Michigan, and would make paid sick time for all people in Michigan. In 2018, the Republican-led legislature decided to adopt that ballot proposal instead of letting it go to the ballot. Then they amended it, and then there were court battles that said, hey, you know, you can't adopt an initiative and then change it later. So, the Supreme Court ruled this summer that that was unconstitutional and that the law would go into effect, actually, this, I think it's on the 21st, in just a couple of days now. So, what we're seeing right now is the legislature, both parties, working to essentially gut and dismantle the One Fair Wage laws. I'm proud to have voted no in the House on any changes to this. I will say, you know, all labor unions in the state are opposed to any changes to this. And I'll just squash a couple myths real quick, is that this bill does not ban tipping. It would get rid of the ability to pay your employees lower than the minimum wage. This would allow people to be paid the minimum wage as servers and tip workers and then tipped on top of that. This has been enacted in seven other states already, Washington, California, Oregon, Nevada, Alaska, Minnesota, and Montana, so a good mixture of red and blue states. And, you know, despite all the business groups saying this is going to destroy the economy, I would argue those, some of those states have stronger economies than Michigan. Can talk more about that if you would like, and I'll segue that into if you want to hear more about this and my perspective on this. And again, I'm going to fight to make sure we don't change that law and we let it go into effect. I have coffee hours every second Monday of the month at the Radcliffe Center in Garden City from 5:30 to 6:30. And if you would like to reach out to our office to get more information or just tell me your thoughts, our email is DylanWegella, D-Y-L-A-N-W-E-G-E-L-A, at house.mi.gov, and our phone number is 517-373-3818. And as I promised, to keep it short and sweet, that's what I have for you today.
All right. Thank you, Representative Wegella. We appreciate the update. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda, item following a motion and support from your Westland City Council. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone on my left wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendars or motion. There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any changes to consent calendar?
No, thank you.
Yes. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. So, I had a conversation with a resident about the consent calendar, just wanting further clarification on item number E, so I would like to move that item off the consent calendar.
There's a motion to move item E to New Business. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
To move consent item E to New Business 1A. Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart is absent, excused. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Back to the consent calendar as amended. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Any additional changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held February 3, 2025. Approval of ESRI licensing subscription renewal relating to accessing GIS information and connecting data through City Works. This is for a one-year period in an amount of $9,868.60. Approval of policy management subscription renewal with Power DMS. The subscription will resume immediately, be effective for one year, and cost $17,435.98. Approval of investigative technology subscription renewal with Selbright. The subscription is effective for one year in the amount of $20,600. Approval of the 2024 Physical Security and Election Resiliency Grant. Funds associated with this grant, which total $39,000, 1,000 per precinct, shall be used exclusively for physical security and election resiliency enhancements. Last item approved on the consent calendar today. Approval of request from Western Rain Relay for Life to waive the administrative fees for rental of the Farmer's Market Pavilion and Alliance Pavilion for their annual event to be held June 7, 2025. The rental fee to be waived is $885. Moving to payment voucher.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there anything from the maker?
No, thank you.
Is there anything from the supporter? So, any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
New Business. Item 1. Approval of attorney's recommendation to resolve litigation as discussed in the closed study session. This is Ziden versus City of Westland.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart is absent, excused. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Back to the consent calendar as amended. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Any additional changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held February 3, 2025. Approval of ESRI licensing subscription renewal relating to accessing GIS information and connecting data through City Works. This is for a one-year period in an amount of $9,868.60. Approval of policy management subscription renewal with Power DMS. The subscription will resume immediately, be effective for one year, and cost $17,435.98. Approval of investigative technology subscription renewal with Selbright. The subscription is effective for one year in the amount of $20,600. Approval of the 2024 Physical Security and Election Resiliency Grant. Funds associated with this grant, which total $39,000, 1,000 per precinct, shall be used exclusively for physical security and election resiliency enhancements. Last item approved on the consent calendar today. Approval of request from Western Rain Relay for Life to waive the administrative fees for rental of the Farmer's Market Pavilion and Alliance Pavilion for their annual event to be held June 7, 2025. The rental fee to be waived is $885. Moving to payment voucher.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there anything from the maker?
No, thank you.
Is there anything from the supporter? So, any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
New Business. Item 1. Approval of attorney's recommendation to resolve litigation as discussed in the closed study session. This is Ziden versus City of Westland.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilman Rakowski. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart is absent, excused. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business. Item 1A, formerly known as Consent Item E. Approval of purchase of nine replacement tablets for the fire department in the amount of $8,549.91.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Um, through the chair, I did ask some questions to the chief earlier, so I don't know if he would like to...
Yeah, if you have some questions, through the chair to the chief.
I'd be open to, I know my question, we're basically a little bit learning about their replacements, and I know that I remember that there was, we talked a little about the fact that there, because it was only two years ago, I think, that we first saw them. So, through the chair.
Sure, yeah. So, technically, we're on two tablets and all of our fire apparatus. There's one in the front that we use for mapping and replanning and some other stuff, and then each unit has a tablet that we do patient care reports and other reports on. So, we did switch from Panasonic ToughBooks, which was like a ruggedized laptop a couple of years ago, which were fairly expensive. For the price that I'm paying now for nine tablets, that would purchase about two Panasonic ToughBooks. So, the firefighters wanted to move away from the ToughBooks. They were just kind of bigger and bulkier. These were a little lighter, but we really didn't forecast the amount that we'd be using them, so the original memory is not quite where we need the memory to be. So, I think those are maybe 128 gig, maybe, some might even be smaller than, I don't know, there's some 64s in there. So, the new ones will move to 528s or whatever that one is, or 514s or whatever number that is it ends up being.
228, 230, whatever it takes.
Yeah, whatever it takes, yeah, exactly. So, that allows a little more flexibility going forward, so that's the reason they're on the agenda today.
Any additional questions?
Any other questions?
All set? Okay. Pro Tem Sampi.
Um, thank you. So, Chief, I, through the chair, through the chair to the chief, had a question from a resident in regards to how the tablets are loaded. So, are you going to have the software, is it just a transfer? So, the software that's on your current tablets, is that just transferred over and is this is the cost that we're paying, does it cover the transfer for all of the software and updates, or is there any additional costs associated with that?
All right. Through the chair, I'll pass this one to Director Brown. He'd probably be a little bit better on the software than me.
Uh, through the chair, I can answer that question. So, the transfer of data from iPad to iPad, that's actually handled in-house. There's no cost associated with that. We just buy the hardware, and then we do all the transfers of any data for any hardware in-house. We don't pay anybody for any data transfers of anything, laptop, desktops, iPads or cellphones. Completely done in-house. To save cost.
So, thank you. Thank you for that, Director Brown. So, are the iPads populated with anything, or is it just clean iPads that need to be loaded with Director Brown's team?
Yes. I mean, the iPads come to us the same way they would come to, you know, anyone else that bought an iPad. So, they come, you know, with a set kind of Apple stuff on there, and then we, through, again, if Director Brown wants to talk, discuss this one, he's probably a little bit more versed in this than I am, so.
Through the chair. The iPads come generic. There's no specific software installed in that, other than the generic Apple software, so like messaging's on there, FaceTime, GarageBand. We go through and we clean out the bloatware that's on it that's not used. We load the applications that are necessary for the department that needs to use it, so we make them as clean and as secure as possible. We reset all the security settings to make sure they meet our standards, and then we add our mobile device management on it also.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Yeah, no, thank you. I think that hopefully answers some questions about the iPads and how they're set up and who's setting them up and costs associated. So, I appreciate everyone taking that question.
All set?
Yeah.
All right. Councilman?
I'm just going to ask one silly question. These is for the iPads, is this, does this include cases? Firefighters dropping them, protecting screens or anything?
Uh, so, through the chair. This is the iPads, we're purchasing the screen protectors in cases separately. We actually have those already in our office. This is strictly for the iPads.
All right. So, no additional cost coming?
No additional invoices, other than what's already been billed.
Yep. Thank you.
All set, Councilman Hornbuckle? All right. Any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
New Business. Item 2. Set public hearing date for the proposed 2025-2026 budget. Administration suggests the public hearing date be May 5, 2025.
No motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
New Business. Item 3. Public hearing for the proposed realignment of voting precincts.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing. At this time, we're going to turn the floor over to the clerk's office for a brief presentation regarding the precinct realignment. After that, members of the public will have the opportunity to comment for three minutes during the public hearing. Council will have the opportunity on the next agenda item to offer discussion on that agenda item. Mr. Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This has been a very big project, and because this is a public hearing, may involve some questions that I can answer before we get to them, I have prepared statements here. So, our goal with this precinct realignment strategy is primarily to exit school buildings. And to that end, we have, are successful with the plan to get out of all but one school building, and I will talk about that. But as to why, we're centralizing our off-site election administration, we're exiting all but one school. This will create staff efficiencies. This will save the city significant money. It'll be better utilization of a dwindling manpower pool, the folks that you see when you go to a precinct. We will have reduced numbers of the physical equipment, less computer hardware, less tabulators, and fewer host sites, fewer places that you would go to vote. Since 2018, election demands have expanded tremendously, but newly approved legislation, primarily that which expanded precinct size, and newly revised pre-processing of absentee ballots on multiple days, does offer clerk's offices significant benefits. No reason absentee voting, early voting, both have enhanced the ability to vote. There are really no barriers to voting in our state. We project that beginning with the governor election next year, 2026, about one-third of our voters will vote early, about one-third will vote absentee, and the remaining third will likely go to the precinct to vote. Thirty-nine precincts are currently hosted in 18 buildings in our community. New laws mean that we could be in as few as three buildings. Three. But the reality is, we'll be in 10 buildings. New laws mean that we could reduce down to 14 precincts from 39, but the reality is, we're proposing 18 precincts. We plan to staff six election workers per precinct. We will use about 50 less election workers during every election. Precincts are proposed to be renumbered, except precinct number 28. We crafted this plan to account for split precincts due to different school districts as well as different state rep and state senate seats. We plan to exit all but two school buildings this year. Cooper School, which is an elementary school, and the Dyer Center, which is a non-student building. We expect that the school exit strategy is going to be well-received by the electorate, by parents, by school officials, and others. In fact, when the deputy clerk contacted one of our school districts to mention this, they were overjoyed, and probably almost as much as we are. The one building, however, that we do at this time need to remain in with their consent is Cooper School, as I mentioned. But if a replacement building were to arise, we would act on it. If we became aware of a building that could handle that volume of voters and adequate parking, et cetera, we will make the change. In addition to the two school buildings, we're going to utilize churches, the Hellenic Center, and city buildings, making permanent the Friendship Center and Jefferson Barnes. The sites, again, have to serve multiple precincts, they got to have sufficient parking, and we're asking for a long-term commitment. We don't want to go through this again in a year or two. We plan to make a per-precinct stipend to all non-government hosts of $600 per precinct per election. Today, we pay $250 per building. We project, well, based on our plan, that would cost $4,800 per election. We ask that our host locations allow us to put wear and tear on their buildings. We tie the location up for two days outside the election, the day we drop equipment off, the day we pick it up, and between that on Election Day. It's a lot to ask for relatively no compensation, and we have received pushback. Additionally, we're asking to increase election official pay by $20. Today, it's $250 for a chairperson, $225 for a co-chair, and $185 for an election inspector. And keep in mind, that's a 15-hour day, so not a lot of money. This plan was unanimously approved by the Election Commission on February 3. They recommended to this body for approval. Though a public hearing is not required, I asked for that so that folks could provide feedback. The deadline, if approved, the deadline to notify the state of all of this is next month. If approved, we'll go to cable TV with public service announcements. We plan to notify each voter with a postcard and a replacement voter card, and we have about 68,600 voters as of today. Many other towns completed this process last year, but as those of us in here know, not every town had five elections, and we did not believe that we could get it done and notify the electorate in time for the next election. That's why we didn't do it last year. It's a good plan. It involved daily work since about Thanksgiving by our deputy clerk, Shannon Edman, who is also here with us tonight. I thank you, Shannon, for the work that you put into this. Just a reminder before I conclude, this is a public hearing. It's only for the public to speak. It doesn't provide for a question and answer, but during the next agenda item, if you ask a question, I'll answer it during the next item. And with that, I thank you and would say that we're ready to receive your comment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clerk, for the presentation. We appreciate that. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Tatchell.
Mayor, Council. Mr. LeBlanc, there has been some word out that possibly our Holiday Park community voting area may be affected, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that there are a lot of seniors there. I realize that they do have absentee voting, but because of the convenience and the short distance to the community center, where they're able to walk, and we always have full staffing for that particular area. So, I would say that many of the people that I've spoken to would feel that they would be very uncomfortable being moved, and if possible, to be able to stay in that location would be the wish of many of the residents. So, I was just wondering if that was going to be an area that was affected.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tatchell. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak in the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, you counsel. So, now, question. Is this for my three minutes?
It is.
Or is this for...
This is your three minutes for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tatchell. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak in the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Council. So now, question. Is this for my three minutes?
It is. This is your three minutes for the public hearing.
The public hearing.
For commentary on this issue. Not, this is not your general comment for any agenda item or any issue. This is strictly in the public hearing.
Okay. So do I have to wait until it comes?
Yes, if you have a general comment that's not related to this specific agenda item, we'll get you later on.
I'm sorry?
We'll get you later on, because there's an additional three-minute public comment time at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Good evening. On behalf of precinct twenty-eight, which I am a precinct delegate, and it's a good thing that the precinct will not move because it's very central to our voters there, our registered voters. We have 2,833 registered voters down in precinct twenty-eight, and I think we have more registered voters than anybody else in the city. And we can generally, we can get them out because of the close proximity of the polls. So it's a good thing that that stays there, and so I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public hearing? There's a motion to close public hearing by Councilwoman Murkowski, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item four. Approval of precinct realignment plan.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Just one. I don't know if I missed this, but if I did see it in the paper, what is the actual effective date? Is this instantly effective for this current year?
Yes. The process is such that if you approve it as a collective body today, tomorrow, our office will forward to the county and to the state verification of that, and then the wheels crunch on their end. It will be effective for the August election. Assuming there is an August election. You know, that's a primary, but it'll definitely be effective this year. Yes.
Any additional questions, Councilwoman? Okay. Anything from the supporter? Okay. Councilwoman Murkowski.
Yes, thank you.
At some point, allow me to know when I can respond to questions.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Through the chair to Clerk LeBlanc. If you could, please, could you respond to the citizens' request about information on the Holiday Park precinct?
Sure.
Thank you.
In a nutshell, the precinct is not proposed to be moved away from the clubhouse location. The precinct, however, will change. All precincts will be larger than they are today. There will be more people that are assigned to the Holiday Park Clubhouse voting precinct, for example. But the, the non-school buildings are not proposed to be affected by this plan, but we're exiting schools, so other buildings are being brought in. We actually had people ask us to be a precinct host location, so we're going to do that. But Holiday Park is intact. I would let you know that two items came up during the Election Commission meeting. The mayor and the council president each expressed a desire to do two things. One, keep Holiday Park, because the original plan had proposed a different arrangement regarding voters that currently go to Holiday Park. Secondly, I brought up that I was on the council a couple of decades ago when during one of the realignment strategies, precinct twenty-eight became renumbered. And I'm just going to throw a number out. It was going to be precinct twelve or something like that. And the city council adopted that recommendation, and then later became aware that precinct twenty-eight, I mean, when we think of precinct twenty-eight, we know where it is, we know what it is. And that historical reference needed to remain intact, and it was changed back to twenty-eight. So when we began this effort, we knew that we would not have twenty-eight precincts. We also knew that precinct twenty-eight would remain precinct twenty-eight. So I hope that that responds to the questions.
Any additional questions from you, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. No, I just wanted to express my appreciation and hard work of the clerk and the clerk's office and the Election Commission. I know this wasn't easy work, but it definitely shows a commitment to our electorate, as well as, you know, some fiscal responsibility on making our elections not be a burden, burdensome on the city, especially after last year. So, thank you.
We appreciate that, and if I might, I just want to make sure, I cannot overstate the work that the deputy clerk did on this. I mean, our office certainly is responsible for it, and my name isn't at the top of the letterhead, but Shannon did the overwhelming majority of the work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem Sampi.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilwoman Murkowski, for bringing that up. I know the clerk's office is often busy. Our deputy clerk is often busy with many different things, but thank you for the work that you put into this. Just based on what I'm looking at, it looks like we're going to, just to confirm, we're going to have precincts one through seventeen and then twenty-eight. So we'll have eighteen precincts, to be fair. The count of voters is going to go up pretty significantly in many cases. So it looks like Hellenic Cultural Center will have two precincts, Holiday Park will still have one, Cooper will have two, Wesleyan Methodist Church will have two, Library two, Friendship Center two, Dyer two, St. John's Episcopal Church two, Jefferson Barnes two, and then Christ the Temple will have one, if that's correct.
Yes.
Okay. So because of the counts significantly increasing, it looks like there's going to be significant foot traffic to Cooper School upwards of quite possibly eighty-one hundred voters, maybe eighty-two, right? If that's not wrong.
To be clear, if it's okay to respond to that now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
To be clear, that is the assigned number of voters to be assigned to that building. However, two things come into play. One, that with absentee and early voting, that'll take care of, if you will, two-thirds of those who intend to vote.
Okay.
And secondly, and perhaps equally as important, all people don't vote. And we have never had an election where two-thirds of the electorate has voted. So when we take the potential for two-thirds of the electorate to vote during a presidential election only, and then we take two-thirds of that who will likely vote by other methods, we are confident that, just like this year, a presidential year, we didn't have people waiting in lines. I mean, I don't believe that anybody to vote in this election waited more than ten minutes, which is relatively nothing. In most of our precincts, there was no wait whatsoever, and it's because of a couple of things. One, we have become more efficient through training, through dedicated staff and election officials. And two, because of other methods of voting. So I acknowledge that the number is high, but the actual foot traffic to go into precincts is not projected to be higher.
That's fair, and that's fair to say, too. Just for those that are in the audience and watching at home, I know that the clerk's office put a lot of time and energy into this. This is a significant cost savings to the city, as he had mentioned, by condensing the precincts. It really saves costs down the road with the precinct workers and the delegates. So it really is a focus of the clerk's office, from what I'm understanding, to not only have it efficient, but a cost savings. And I appreciate your guys' diligence, both you and the deputy clerk, in making this plan effective for everyone. So I'm going to be in support of that this evening, so I'm looking at this right now, and it looks like a good plan. But just for those, I'm assuming that are watching at home, it's going to be a change with your precinct number. Quite possibly, everyone's going to have a new precinct. So I know that you'll be working on communication, and again, I just want to thank you both for your time and energy, and I know that we're all on a common goal. So thank you very much.
All set, Pro Tem? Thank you. Any additional discussion from the council? I just want to say a few things. As a member of the Election Commission, you know, I want to thank our clerk's office, both the clerk, the deputy clerk Inman, and all the support staff for all the work they did for many months getting this prepared and ready to go. So thank you, guys, for your tireless work on this. Thank you to the mayor for joining me on the Election Commission to help draft this. Just two things real quick that I do want to reiterate that the clerk kind of touched upon. With the issues of the schools, school safety's become paramount for, I think, all of us here in the community, and certainly for our Wayne Westland School District and our Levonia Schools as well. And, you know, one of the missions of this plan was to get us out of schools for the school safety issue as well, so that we're not having strangers coming into schools at the same time that our kids are there learning throughout the day. So I think this was a big part of the effort that the clerk's office wanted to focus on, which was school safety. The Election Commission wanted to focus on as well, so that we don't have strangers coming in and voting in and out throughout the day while kids and teachers and staff are there in the schools. The other thing, and I believe you touched upon this in your presentation, is that the actual number of workers per precinct is going up. So previously, you had four workers per precinct, and now that number is going up to six, correct?
Yes.
So even though for folks watching at home and folks in the audience, there is some contention of the precincts, there's actually going to be more election workers per precinct, so that the process will not be stifled, and it will be sped up, and you can get in and out without having to wait to vote. So... There's a decrease in the total number of people working overall because we have less physical voting locations, but there is an increase in the number of people working per precinct at the voting location. The other thing that we discussed and debated as an election commission, the mayor and myself, and the clerk, and also the deputy clerk, was the idea that people are going to start really voting like a third, a third, and a third. You'll see, and we're already seeing this pattern develop, where a third of our voters are going to choose to do it the traditional way, go to their precinct and vote in person. A third will come here to City Hall or at whatever future early voting location site and vote early, and a third will choose to vote with a no reason absentee ballot. So as we see, you know, that pattern developing, we're seeing less people actually show up to their physical precinct location on Election Day to vote because they've already voted early, either through the early voting in-person process or through the no reason absentee process. And again, I'll just say thank you to the clerk's office, Clerk LeBlanc, Deputy clerk Inman, for all their hard work and everybody behind the scenes who put in a lot of work.
If I could offer just a final comment. Yes, this plan was driven by exiting school buildings. We largely would accomplish that if approved. Secondary and also benefit, of course, is money. You know, our payroll, not including our city staff, but our payroll for election officials on Election Day exceeds $100,000. It's a lot of money. But it costs money to run elections, so we're trying to do it better. And I would add that it sort of dovetails with the Pro Tem's original question. Elections have become evolutionary. You know, we have in the room right now, we have three, well, two former legislators and a current legislator. You know, they're always thinking of ways to improve the process. The state of Michigan will evaluate replacement election equipment two years from this month. Two years from now, there'll likely be a recommendation for new election equipment. How that's financed isn't known yet and things of that nature, but it's going to be better. Already today, part of the evolution is that some communities utilize what's called a dual poll book. For those of you that go to a precinct, you know that you go to the desk, you fill out a piece of paper, you move over to the computer. There's a person seated there, and they do all the magic, and you get a ballot. Some communities are utilizing the state authorized dual poll book where you have two of those computers, two different people at one precinct. We haven't done it because, quite frankly, we haven't believed that there's a need for it yet. We don't have people waiting two hours in line. We haven't had that. But if we discover through this process that some things happen that were not expected or anticipated, we will shift gears, and we will take advantage of other legal opportunities out there to process people. So our level of confidence in this plan is as high as it can be. The one issue that, you know, we did not resolve and that we hope to is that we're still in one school building. But again, we're on the lookout, and if some other entity, some other building can serve that exact population and is inside those boundaries, we'll consider it, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion from the council? All right, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart is absent excuse. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Murkowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous approval, we thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, we will now move on to public comment. So everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone wishing to speak, public comment? On my right. Now would be the time, ma'am. We'll get to you first.
Nice move.
I'm sorry, I'm new at this.
That's okay. That's all right.
I have to make a point of doing better and coming to these sessions. Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Thomas, and I am currently living on Kalamazoo Street. Been living there for about twenty-four years. And during this time, I've noticed that our, my particular area is declining. The paving of Grand Travis, part of it is paved, and my part was left undone. I don't know why. I'd like to know why. The streets are crumbling. You know, they come through there and they dump that black stuff. All it does is make it worse. When it rains, I mean, we literally have holes in the streets. I'm embarrassed to have my family come and visit me. I'm actually embarrassed every time I come to my house, driving to there, because I look all around me, and everything is pristine. Secondly, I noticed that it was a point where, some years, where the neighborhood was being kept up. They had lifted up things. They were coming by, picking up, you know, making sure that there was debris picked up, baskets from grocery stores being moved back to where they belong. That has stopped happening. It looks like it's just, it's just declining. I don't want to move because I've invested too much money in my home, in my property. I love my house. It's a little two-bedroom house. I love it. That's all I need. I don't want to move, but this is becoming a problem. I have a pole in front of my, in my driveway, and I've tried numerous times. I don't know who I was supposed to go to, wherever I'd called, no one did anything. It's a pole that has all these wires connecting to everybody's house. It drapes like this. It's like a drape. I wish I had brought a picture of it that I, that you guys could see what I'm speaking of. I call people, they say they can't do it. No one can do it. Who's going to be responsible for it? Because every time the garbage truck comes by, they pull it down more. So I'm looking at a loop of wires. I even, at one point, had, the fire department came because the wire fell down. I'm scared that it's going to be, you know, a live wire. All they did was come by and wrapped it around the pole. I don't think they would do that in their neighborhood. I'm just trying to get to a point where my neighborhood is, has the access for our taxes that are being paid as well. Our kids, they walk around, they, our little... as well. Our kids, they walk around, they, our little, what you would call a park, it doesn't appear to be a park. They have one little swing set. One little swing set.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Your time is up, but if you want to hang around afterwards, I know we talked about this the other day at the Norway Citizens Council.
I'm sorry.
If you want to hang around afterwards, myself and some of my colleagues and maybe the Mayor will talk to you and we'll take these issues down.
Very good. Okay, sorry. My three minutes are up?
It is, yeah.
Okay. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
We'll get you afterwards. During your comments, you want to go ahead. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on my left?
Okay, at the last council meeting, I took a little time to think about that decision that a majority of you councils made in regards to transfer of that $10,000 based upon what the Community Development Director told you. Now, both units, the Norway Citizens Council and Gethsemane Church, they both receive ARPA funds. They both receive ARPA funds. And looking at the history of Norway, they received about $250,000 in ARPA funds in less than a year, plus $10,000 in ARPA funds for their Harvest Fest. Now, I guess those rules don't apply to everyone. Only to Gethsemane Church. And that's what the Director told you. We're going to take those monies from Gethsemane Church because they got ARPA funds. She didn't tell you the other side of the story, how much money was pumped into Norway, over $260,000 in ARPA funds. Didn't tell you. So, now, the question is, what are you going to do about it? Because you've created, the council people who voted on it, created a level of discrimination in regards to those two communities. Because I went around and talked to my neighbors about it, and they even said even worse words than that. So, now, again, the Norway community got $260,000 in ARPA funds. Gethsemane gets $25,000 in ARPA funds, but yet they got too much money, so therefore they could not keep the $10,000 which they knew nothing about. And so therefore, council says, yes, okay, send the money, send some more money over to Norway. So now they got $270,000 worth of funds. So, I think that those of you who voted yes for that, you've got some thinking to do about it and maybe you can resolve this issue. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak?
I just want to say, go raise here and updates anyway. I do want to recognize the DEI Department that does the Lunch and Learn. I think they're doing a great job. They were at my meeting tonight, and I think Lunch and Learn is really a good way to educate people out there and stuff like that. In our meeting, when I was running it, the chair, and we don't just sit around, we are doing things. We, it was a really good meeting tonight, and it's about inclusive and DEI means everywhere. Everybody should be inclusive, not dissociations here. We're not going backwards. We're going forwards. I want to say, Melissa, thanks for going to that thing. Anyway, the Disabilities Awareness Month is going to be busy for me. So, I'm getting things ready, getting things planned, and PSA I think we're going to be doing, Melissa, and other things. I'm planning on getting with Darryl and doing the fire training for the new ones, and usually I do them once a year. And I think it's good to keep up what's going on, how they're working with people and stuff like that. And I think they're doing a great job. City of Westland PD is doing a great job, too. I always see them out there. So, anyway, so I do talk to them once in a while. So, we'll see what else. I'm also on the Disability Council now, got appointed by the Governor for three more years, and I'm really doing some hard work up there, too. So, I am continuing doing Coffee Hour. Do you want to go? I know I heard a gentleman up here, don't know his name. I'd like to go to one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else on my left wishing to speak, public comment?
Good evening, guys. I had heard a couple, was it a month or two ago, I had missed a meeting and I heard there was mention of CERT, and I've talked to a couple of members about the CERT team that's supposed to be being created and generated here in Westland. From my understanding, there hasn't been any movement towards that. I don't know if there's been conversation. I know I've been asking questions, because I currently belong to the Canton CERT team, because there was no Westland CERT team. So, when I actually missed the meeting where it was discussed, I was excited because I want to belong to the Westland CERT team. So, I don't know where we are with the movement. If someone from an administration or city council could tell me where we are. I know we're pushing for updates and stuff. I know that this process is going to involve a lot of training, equipment. I know Canton's team does monthly call-outs and stuff like that. So, there's a lot to move forward. And that's just where my concern is, is the movement keeps going forward. So, I appreciate your time and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on public comment? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, residents and everybody in attendance tonight. Mrs. Thomas, I wanted to answer your question when you were at the podium, but I wasn't called on. But I believe we met when I was knocking doors, running for the seat a couple of years ago, and I told you I'd get that road paved. We're going to pave Grand Travis this spring. So, yeah, yeah. And I've touched base with our DPS Director multiple times about it. It didn't get done the last construction season. Apologize for that. We have over 200 miles of road in the city. Certainly, your neighborhood is as important as any other, but I want to reassure you that that's going to get done this spring. It'll be beautiful, and I think you'll be very happy with the results. I noticed you brought up a couple other issues, ordinance, ordinance control and blight. These are things that are very important to me as well. After the meeting, I'm going to make sure you have my contact information, so if there's specific things you're seeing, we can make sure we send city staff out to address it. I actually drive around quite a bit myself and make notes and then send them over to our ordinance and Neighborhood Services Department. But if there's things we're missing, I want to know about it. So, I thank you for coming tonight. And then also that utility poll, I don't know what the city can do about it, but it's something that we can look into for you as well.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Because I called around to ask back.
Ma'am, we can get you after the meeting. We don't typically do a back and forth like this, so I apologize, but we'll make sure to get you after the meeting. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, I'll respect that. It is a city council meeting, so I'll let the Council President keep things moving along. But we, I will stay after the meeting so we can finish our conversation. Thank you. Another thing that was brought up from the residents tonight, CERT program, I know the council made an allocation of funding towards it. We've been in contact with Wayne County, trying to get them to participate as well. It's something that other cities are doing, but Wayne County has a lot of resources. We think that they could bring something to the table with this as well. It's been a little slow trying to schedule something with them, so we're going to, we're going to approach them again. I know Council President Pro Tem Sampi's been asking about this one, so I appreciate it, the question. But it's a matter of staff and scheduling, so we are moving forward with it. It's just maybe a little more time here. And then next, I want to thank Representative Wiegela for coming tonight. Congratulations on your committee assignments, getting bills moving forward, and thank you for your great work on our behalf up in Lansing. And when I served as a state rep with you, you were always great to work with, and thank you for being so accessible and for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. And I'll be in Lansing tomorrow, so hopefully I can talk with you a little more while I'm up there. Want to remind everyone that our warming centers are back open this week. With the temperatures being dangerously low, please keep an eye on your neighbors and your pets. The Police Department is our 24-hour warming center, which is 24/7, all day, every day. Fire Station 1 is open daily from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. City Hall, the Friendship Center, Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, and the Westland Library are all open during normal business hours, nine to five. The Lighthouse Home Mission, which is located at Vinoy and Palmer, is an overnight warming center as well, and it's a food pantry, which is a vital resource for those experiencing homelessness. And I want to thank Councilwoman Sampi again for working with us to help advocate for that and get the word out. They have a wish list, and I know you're probably going to mention this, too, so I'll leave most of it to you, but it's in my notes here, that they have a wish list on, for Amazon, that things that you, the community can donate, and it'll be on our city Facebook page. We also have a donation bin right here in the lobby of Westland City Hall. If anyone in the community wants to help their neighbors out who are in need, you can make your donation right here at City Hall, or you can contact Jennifer at the Lighthouse Home Mission. Her number is 734-467-5623, and you can arrange a pickup from her. I'd also like to just mention that we did issue a snow emergency based on the amount of snow forecasted. I want to thank our Department of Public Service staff. They were out working very hard overtime, day and night, all week and weekend, this last weekend. Again, the city has over 200 miles of road. They salted and plowed all of it. I know there was a couple little spots that got missed, so if you think you got missed or if they made a mistake, let us know. Councilman Hornbuckle, I know flagged one for me, so I'll get that address from you. But we'll make sure we take care of everybody and be responsive. But I want to thank our DPS workers for all their great work. Residents and business owners are required to shovel and salt their sidewalks, so that's not the city's responsibility. That's private property, so that needs to be done within 24 hours of snow events. So, I just want to remind the businesses, especially on main roads where people are walking, to get those sidewalks shoveled. I'd also like to remind residents that assessment notices will be mailed out February 21st. Our assessor, Jennifer Stamper, she filmed a PSA called Understanding Your Assessment that will air soon on our city TV channel, and it'll be shared on our YouTube page. I'd also like to remind everyone that the council extended the tax payment deadline. It'll be February 28th now. And then also, we are continuing our 2025 Mayor's Listening Tour. So, month by month, I'll be visiting different neighborhoods and buildings throughout the city. In the summer, spring and summer, we'll be doing city parks. But our next one is this week. It's on Thursday, February 20th, at 5:30 p.m. at the Gethsemane Church. And this is my second stop in the southeast area of Westland, and I look forward to seeing folks come out with their comments and questions. I call it a listening tour because my staff and I are here to do the listening. We'll be taking notes and making sure that we're responsive to the community and can hear from everyone in their own neighborhood. But this is open to everybody throughout the city. It's open to city council members and all city staff as well. Whoever wants to join us, it's an open door. Next, I'd like to congratulate Ray Schuholtz on your appointment by Governor Whitmer. Again, thank you for all the great work you do. I know you and Westland resident Jason Reeves were appointed by Governor Whitmer to the Self Advocates of Michigan Committee. Keep up the great work. Thank you for everything you're doing. Next, I'd like to extend my condolences to our Neighborhood Services Director Hassan Saab on the passing of his mother. I'd like to say condolences to Police Department Sergeant Chaim Kozak on the passing of his father, Tom. Tom's somebody that was very active in the community. He was a builder. He built a lot of homes in the city. And so, I just want to, to the entire Kozak family, we're here for you and you're in our thoughts and prayers. And to his late wife, Banjai, thank you for being very encouraging towards me over the years. And then, lastly, I'd like to say condolences to the family of Michael Harris, who was our Nakan Transit Commissioner. He was very active with paralyzed veterans in Michigan and advocated for veterans and the disabled and elderly in our community. And I know services for him will be later in the week. And then finally, I'd like to just say congratulations to Atlas Wholesale Food Company. We cut the ribbon there today. Beautiful facility. It's a large warehouse raid actually across behind City Hall here on the other side of Nakan, Central City Boulevard. It's a warehouse and offices, and it's going to bring 45 great paying jobs to the city of Westland. So, thank you for your investment in our community. And that's all from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the City Attorney's Office this evening?
We're always glad to be here. We thank the council for having us, and I don't have any particular comments tonight, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Grisco. We will now begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilman Delano Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with saying thank you, Mr. Warren, for bringing up your concerns and comments. I received multiple phone calls on the issue at hand as well. I would, I know we have an ARPA meeting next week. I would request that we get a report on all the ARPA dollars, make sure that we are allocating money properly. And also, I did, Mr. Warren, reach out to a couple of colleagues. We definitely going to look into the matter. And we're kind of a little bit upset that the Norway Citizen Council is kind of upset that they're not being heard. So, we definitely reached out to the Mayor after that meeting last, last time to bring up those concerns, and we're going to look into it to see what we can do to help out and make things right. Other than that, I have, I just want to say happy belated Valentine Day to everyone in the audience and everyone at home. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I would like to take the opportunity to echo the earlier sentiments of our moment of silence for Michael Harris. I had the pleasure of serving with him on the Nakan Transit. What an exceptional human being. Mr. Harris was a Marine first and foremost. He suffered a life-altering accident which caused him to be paralyzed, and he kind of shifted his life view and his mission work to be an advocate for those that are differently able, disabled, or, you know, suffering from different mobility maladies. But I think one of the most wonderful things that Mr. Harris did was to serve as the president of the Paralyzed Veterans of America. And I know that, you know, his family will miss him. He had lost his sister just a few years ago, and that was devastating. And, you know, he was a man of love, laughter, and kindness. And I think it'll be very difficult for us as a community to find someone who could really fill Mr. Harris's shoes. So, reading his obituary always moved to tears that he passed in joy and peace, and that's all we can really wish for any of our friends. So, I hope you're exactly where you want to be, Michael. I did want to echo Councilmember Hornbuckle's mention of the ARPA committee meeting. That is going to be on the 25th, so that's 2:25, 25 at 6:00 p.m. That's the ARPA study session. I'd like to formally request, as we were informed would be happening when, before Mayor Coleman's tenure, that we would be receiving ongoing updates from the Finance Department when these ARPA funds are allocated and spent. And it's been quite some time since we've gotten a full view of what that looks like. So, thank you for that. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that. And that way, we'll have a better idea of where we actually stand. Because there was quite a few allocations that have been made that haven't come to fruition. There's allocations that were made and were pulled back at different budget sessions. In fact, Nakan Square, that's the park that's being built right behind Fire Station 1. You know, during Mayor Landau's tenure, when we went into budget sessions, the allocation of ARPA dollars that was made for that park was withdrawn and put back into, I believe, the general fund of your city municipal budget at that time. So, So, you know, that's another project that we have out there that I'd like to have an update on. And I've been receiving phone calls from people because they've seen, you know, let's see the dirt and the movement, and, you know, it's exciting when we have new developments. And they, you know, they're concerned, you know, $12 million is a pretty hefty lift. So if we could get an update on that, maybe we can even extend that study session to include that if we could get it out early enough, council leadership. And, you know, also get an update on Fire Station 2. You know, I think people are really excited and happy to be able to drive down Meriman. They see a little activity happening at, you know, the new location of Station 2, and we'd like to have an update. So, you know, that did contain some ARPA expenditures. So I think it'd be nice to know. And, you know, I certainly know with the financial climate that we're in, if you're worried about the price of your eggs, I can only imagine how much more expensive some of these developments might be looking. And, you know, when we put out a request for bid, we accept those for, you know, the value that they're bringing. And there's always some kind of clause that asks, you know, they have a 10% or a 20% buffer there. I think if you looked at the price of your groceries, you're spending much more than 20% more on your groceries. So I think it's a concern of mine that, you know, all of these projects are going to be able to be completed, but how much more is it going to cost us? And hopefully, it's not just an outrageous amount of money. So with that, I'm looking forward to us finally putting the lid on the rest of the ARPA allocations, you know, and, you know, especially since May 5th is coming very quickly for the upcoming budget hearings. So I just want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction, as we've all anticipated, because we certainly had a lot of dialogue about the budget this year. So let's make sure we're in, we're in good shape before we roll out the next fiscal year. So, okay, well, we'll see you in March, and I wish you all peace. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Council President?
Yes.
If I could just respond?
Yeah, real quick.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski, yeah, we'd be happy to get the updates on those issues, so, yeah.
Yeah.
See them soon.
And since we're going to do this back and forth, which we don't normally do, you know, when you, you weren't mayor yet at the time when ARPA started, and the Finance Department was asked by council to provide ongoing reports, and I know I got a look from the deputy mayor, but you were part of that, we asked for reports, and, you know, we just haven't gotten one. You know, so let's just get a
Sure.
...a reading so that we know, especially before we go into this meeting on the 25th, so that we know exactly what's available and what can be used.
Yep, so you're asking for...
I want a full update of all of the ARPA allocation spending and remaining funds.
Well, I think that's the purpose of the study session.
No, the purpose of the study session is to allocate the remaining ARPA funds. We have already allocated things into projects, and we haven't gotten an update where all of those projects are right now.
We'll take a look at trying to get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to echo what Councilwoman Rakowski said. I would love to have an update and see what the money's actually spent on also, because I'm definitely curious, and a lot of it was before my time. And that's all I got.
Okay. Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. I do want to thank Council President and Councilwoman Rakowski for mentioning Mike Harris. I am currently on the Nankin Transit, but since I've been on the council, he has not been at any of the meetings, so I did not get the pleasure of working with him, so. But I do appreciate, I heard all these good things, and I heard all these things about what it would be like to work with him, and then it never happened. And so, yes, it was quite a blow to say, okay, well, that's, you know. So I appreciate your, both of your comments, because I have that memory of him. I do want to thank our, also our public comments tonight. I appreciate these, I've written, written some stuff down, and I'm not going to, I'm appreciative that there are answers given and that there's more conversation that we're going to be having about certain things, so we can actually figure out some of the different things going on, whether it be related to ARPA, or I know there's a CDBG thing, you know, some things going up, coming up and things like that with study sessions and stuff like that. So I just, I know that it's going to be ongoing. And I'll repeat, you know, support that we want for the ARPA dollars, you know, that we want. I was going to say a little bit, and hopefully, we're going to be finding out when our budget study sessions are being, because we scheduled the public hearing tonight, and I believe the next thing will be getting our study sessions going, which are going to be those fun Saturdays. So I'm going to encourage people to not wait for the study sessions, if you have a, you know, take a look at last year's budget, and if you have questions about it or want, you know, want to get information, by all means, give me a call. I, I do love numbers, and I would be happy to, you know, take the conversation and see what we can do, because obviously, that's what's going on right now, is the administration there looking at the budget to present to us, and then we're going to have these study sessions and then public hearings. So it's just, knowing that process and getting ahead of it is obviously a critical thing that I would love for the city, the city residents to do, as well as those of us on Another thing I want to appreciate, Councilwoman Rakowski, because I know I've learned with fundraising, that people just want to know the status and information about where their money went. Sometimes, you know, sometimes it doesn't matter how much, how much it is that they gave, it could be a little, it could be a lot, they just want information. So I think the more we can give that information, so I appreciate some of the information you have, you just gave, and then even asking that, just, it's just information, and being transparent about that. I do want to mention, I went to the great, the Relay for Life kickoff event this last week, and it was wonderful. I'm really excited to see that, that event again happen again. They did, I don't remember the numbers right now, but I seem to think like last year, they raised something like $64,000, I don't think, I'm close there, somewhere in that range, I think it was, it was a fairly substantial that they raised to help fight a cure for cancer. I'm looking at number $75,000, I'm sorry, I'm getting little cues here, but a lot of money. I mean, it was a lot of money to help find a cure for cancer. So those of us, I would, I know what the statistics, everybody, one of three, and we all know somebody that's been affected by cancer. And I've shared that I have family members as well. So I, I love that kickoff event. I'm, I'm hoping maybe I can join a team this year, we'll see. I won't start a team, but there's a couple teams I think I'm going to join. I also appreciate that we had the ribbon cutting today with Atlas Foods. That's a second-generation, family-owned business, and that is just exciting to have in our city. If anyone knows anything about family-owned businesses, you know, when you start getting to the second generation and then even third generation, I've had the pleasure of working for multiple family-owned generational businesses, and when you can do that well and get to the next generation, it is just amazing. So I love that Atlas Foods is here, and I, I think it's really exciting to have that. And then I'm going to close my comments with a happy birthday to my youngest son, who turned 14 today. And he had a little special day, I was actually was able to bring him lunch. So I don't, I don't usually do that, I don't usually break away from my world and bring my child lunch at school, but I did, I brought him Chick-fil-A. So it wasn't a really big deal, it was also really expensive. Anyway, because I was kind of a shake too. But, you know, so I do want to recognize my youngest, because he's actually a symbol of, I've been in Westland a little bit longer than his age, so he's a symbol of us moving here and things like that, and one of the, one of the, one of the welcome surprises when we made the decision to move to Westland. So, and I'll close with that, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilwoman Bowman, and happy birthday to your son, Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. I figure I'll just continue on with the birthdays, you know, so I'm going to start off on a positive note and saying happy belated birthday to two people that mean the world to me. So my little brother turned 41 over the weekend, and my grandson turned 1. So we had a nice celebration for both of them, and it was a great weekend. So I just wanted to say happy belated birthday to both of them. And thank you, Mayor, for sharing about Director Saab's loss. I didn't know that, so I'll send my condolences. I have talked to Chaim about his loss and Mr. Harris and his family. I did not, I did not know that, so thank you, Councilwoman, for sharing that. I know you, you sent that information to us, but I didn't know that he was even ill, so, wow, that's, that's, that's really sad. I know he's been an advocate in the community for quite some time. So Councilwoman Rakowski, I think absolutely your, your question is valid, so I think if we can get allocations on the larger projects, you're right. So any runovers on the fire station and the park timeline, and if we do have runovers, where this is coming from, that's all valid, I agree. And then that way, we can kind of figure out where we're at status-wise and kind of go from there. So I think, you know, Council President and myself can maybe put an email together, formal request, and get that over. Mr. Warren, thank you again for bringing this up. Last meeting, I was the lone voter, no, who said no. I wasn't exactly thrilled about the, I guess, your feedback not being heard. I know that we have spoken with the mayor. It sounds like they were trying to reach out to the committee, but I think there is a conscious effort, right, that we're going to, we have to continue to give support the people, as I mentioned last time, the people that volunteer on a committee. You give your time, you give your thoughts, a lot of times, you do a lot of work behind the scenes. So, you know, from a lone no voter, I just felt like we kind of rushed, we felt rushed. So thank you for bringing that up. You know, I always think we can do better, and I appreciate you speaking with the community too, and just knowing, like, we really have to be conscious as individuals when we vote and what we, what we vote for, and making sure that's spread out fairly throughout the community. And personally, I felt it was not fair, which is why I stood lone vote to say no. So, so thank you for bringing that up, and I had quite a few people that reached out to me and said thank you for, for standing up for what you believe in. So, you know, I think, again, we'll always do better. I wanted to thank the DPS, as mentioned, DPS has been very, very, very busy in the neighborhoods, in the streets. You know, I know the city has many county projects and county roads, but, you know, I know they've been very busy, so I just want to thank them, because I've seen a lot of other cities being really crappy, the roads, and, you know, Westland, it's funny when you cross over that border, and in many situations, Westland's pretty decent. So I want to thank the DPS for all your hard work in plowing, and a lot of times, they do 15, 16-hour shifts. So thank you again for all those DPS workers. The mayor did mention this, but I will, I will talk about this again. It's a huge passion of mine to serve the community and be a public servant. I don't label myself as a politician, I try to serve you. So when I had found out that Full Gospel Temple was housing the Lighthouse Home Mission, I almost made it my mission to say, how can I help? How can I step up? And really, they, they do struggle with volunteers, they struggle with, they struggle with a lot of different things. Come to find out, there's, it's all volunteer ran, but food is always, always, always needed. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, if you can donate a meal, whether it be even just a pizza, and order it there, they have an average of 25 to 30 people a night that come in, usually around 7 o'clock, they're waiting outside, and they come in for the evening, and then they'll stay overnight, and they'll come back for meals. They also do a lot of food insecurity, where they pass, pass out bread and other items. So, you know, thank you to all those that have donated. I know your donations are graciously accepted, and this is going to be probably a huge ramp up until the end of March. Usually, March slows down, but from now until the end of March, March 31st is, they'll need those paper products, napkins, bowls, cups, silverware, hand warmers, boots, clothes. Again, gently used is, is always accepted. And we did talk a little bit as a council, a few members, and I know the mayor talked about this too, is Atlas Wholesale Food Company is a new company in Westland, and afterwards, I spoke to the owner, one of the owners, Becky, and I talked to her about Lighthouse, and she's like, I want to, I want to be a part of the community. So they're going to graciously donate a lot of the food that they really either can't get rid of or they want to get rid of. So I want to thank them, especially Becky, for, a new business in Westland, raised her hand and said, what can I do to help? So I'm going to facilitate that donation and get that over there, because they have a lot of bulk-sized food that is going to go right over to Lighthouse. So again, it's a great opportunity for a new business, and they just moved into the city, and they're already stepping up. So it's, it's great that we have these businesses in the city. Just a few last things. I'm working with Ray Schuholtz, who mentioned this, on filming a few PSAs for Disability Awareness Month, which is March. So we'll be working on getting some nice PSAs out to educate the community about disabilities and just being kind, and, you know, Ray brings a lot of experience in his years of advocacy, so thank you, Ray, for, for asking about this. I really, I know we did it last year, but I look forward to working with you again. Yeah. Kyle Mulligan and myself are working, I guess this is like our announcement, on our second annual autism walk. We're looking at Saturday, April 26 at 4:00 p.m. This will take place at Tatten Park. It's going to be a great opportunity to meet with other families, connect with resources, and more. So I know that the mayor supported me last year, I'm assuming that you'll be able to support this year. It's going to be, we were talking just aside conversation, I think it's going to not be on a budget session.
All right.
We'll see. It's the very last one, but Autism Awareness Month is April, so we want to do something special, and we have a lot of great things, I think, in the works. And then, Mayor, we'll, we'll connect about CERT. I know that's something that is a passion of mine, obviously, I was pushing with that, and thank you for bringing it up too. If we got a notch at the county, like, I'll call them every day, I know you're busy, but I know that's something that we're really excited about, and I know we have good support here in City Hall too, so I think it's going to be something that we, we're going to, we're going to keep on working on it. If it's county support we need, we'll get the county support. And Ms. Thomas, I do understand that you brought up about the blight. My stepdaughter lives actually on the other side of Grand Traverse. We've seen a lot of, more so, you're right, with blight, shopping carts and such. We don't know where they come from, but she's been a little bit nervous, there's been things that have just been thrown on her, on her driveway, and so, one of the things that I really am going to be focusing on with Council President is figuring out a way that we can have more ordinance officers. I feel like Westland doesn't have enough, so that's a priority of mine, you know, that's a priority of council presidents, we talk about this often, because a lot of times, individuals don't, we don't know on things that we, we don't see. So if we have more ordinance officers out on the road, I think that will help, and it sounds like the mayor's going to talk with you, I'd be happy to share some thoughts, but I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. I, I looked up the map as you were talking, and it, I know exactly where you're talking about. So it's great that the mayor has it on his preview about the paving, which is awesome, but thank you for bringing it up, I, I appreciate it. Absolutely. So that, that's pretty much all for me. Next meeting, Monday, March 3 at 7:00 p.m. That's, that's my son's birthday, that's my baby's 18th birthday. Talk about a lot of birthdays. So I, I hope to see everyone there. If you have any questions or comments, you can always reach out to me on my personal Facebook page, Councilwoman Sampe. Until then, be safe and kind with each other, and we'll see you in two weeks.
All righty, thank you, Pro Tem Sampe. First off, I would like to thank our DPS workers, who worked really hard around the clock here through two different snowstorms. We got kind of pounded back-to-back with two pretty significant snowstorms, and want to thank Ramsey, his entire team, and everybody who was working around the clock, driving around the city, plowing the snow, salting the streets. They oftentimes have to get to the main and major roads first, so your Avondale's, Wildwoods, Newburgs, roads like that, that just have more traffic and are higher density, they get to first before they hit all of our subdivision streets, but they are working really hard around the clock. And I want to thank Ramsey and the entire DPS team and our ASME members for really working hard. And, you know, this goes to show why having a good and fair CBA contract through ASME is critically important for our DPS employees. So thank you for each of you for working around the clock to make sure our streets are getting cleared and cleaned here in Westland. Congratulations to Ray on your appointment, or reappointment, to the governor's Disability Committee here in the state of Michigan. You do a fantastic job representing us here and representing those who are differently abled and disabled, so a well-earned honor. And I believe the mayor mentioned, another Westland resident was also appointed, so congratulations there as well. I want to thank the members of the Norwain Community Citizens Council. I had the chance to go, not only to the last meeting, as I usually do, but also had the opportunity to go to the family prom that was this past Friday. It was a really great event put on by the Norwain Community Citizens Council, Wayne Metro Action Agency, and some other community groups who volunteered and helped out as well. So a lot of kids there, a lot of families there who enjoy So, a lot of kids there, a lot of families there who enjoyed not only the prom for the dancing, but the arts and crafts activities, the photo wall that we had, the events that were there, and the food that was brought as well. So, to the Norway Community Citizens Council, to members of the community who came out, I see several of them in the audience here today. Thank you for volunteering for this and for all the families that came out and enjoyed themselves at the Norway Family Prom. I'm glad that you were able to come out and enjoy the prom. Speaking of Norway, I know I talked to Ms. Thomas at the last Norway Community Citizens Council meeting, and I've got a list of notes from stuff that she brought up here as well. And one of the things that she brought up was ordinance issues. If you do have an ordinance issue, don't forget that we have the See, Click, and Fix app that you can download on your phone to report ordinance issues. So, if you go to your smartphone, Android, or iPhone, the Click and Fix app is available in your App Store on your Android or your iPhone smartphone. You can download it, and you have the ability to report direct ordinance issues there. And generally speaking, our ordinance team is out there, if you report it within a couple of days, to take care of that issue and get it remediated. So, don't forget about the Click and Fix app that you can download to address ordinance issues. I won't belabor the point on Lighthouse. It was brought up by the mayor, brought up by my colleague, Pro Tem Sampe, but they do really great work there. So, if you can support Lighthouse and drop some stuff off there, they're along Palmer Road and back of the church, please make sure to support the Lighthouse mission. I know that Pro Tem Sampe, the mayor, Councilwoman Rakowski, have all dropped stuff off over the last couple of weeks, and thank you for doing so. And the clerk, Clerk LeBlanc, was there as well. I will reiterate my thanks to the Clerk's Office for their hard work revamping our precincts here in Westland and making that a more efficient, effective, and cost-saving process. So, again, thank you for all the work that went into that. I did take notes on all the requests from the council. I know on the 17th, an email was sent out by Director LeBlanc regarding some ARPA updates, but we can certainly get an additional ARPA update ahead of the meeting, as well as updates for Fire Station Number 2 with where we're at on that, and the Nakin Square Park there as well. The other thing that I would encourage, not only my colleagues on council, but members of the public on, is when you come to the next ARPA meeting, one of the planned things that I think we're going to be talking about there is, you know, not only how the ARPA money that's left, but how we want to use that money. Obviously, we all have wish lists and projects that we'd like to see, and we know that you and the community have things you'd like to see us invest in as well. But we also know that there has been some recent upheaval at the federal level with the grant money and federal funding. And, you know, what grants are going to be affected, what grants are not going to be affected. And, you know, we're getting some more clarity on that as we move forward, but I think there's still a lot of uncertainty. And so, we, as I think a council, want to put together kind of a contingency plan as well for how we can, you know, move forward, and whether that ultimately means we utilize some ARPA money or we don't utilize ARPA money. I think that's going to be a point of discussion, because we have a lot of federal money that's at stake. Our SAFER Grant for our Westland Fire Department, our COPS Grant for our Westland Police Department, Meals on Wheels programs, our entire Community Development Block grant funding. We're going to get more clarity as we move forward on what is and isn't affected, but when you read the initial statements that came out from the memorandum and the executive order, it was a pretty broad blanket executive order talking about what programs were going to be defunded and what programs were not going to be defunded. So, we certainly don't want to see our police or fire defunded in that regard with the grant money. We don't want to see our Community Development Block Grant program defunded. We don't want to see Meals on Wheels being defunded. So, you know, we'll get some more clarity on that certainly, and have a discussion, I think, at the ARPA meeting, because it's very germane to our ARPA dollars, on how we move forward with any kind of a contingency plan. One other thing that I did want to bring up, well, Pro Tem Sampe brought up one thing that I was going to bring up, which is the ordinance enforcement and the want to have more ordinance officers. That'll be a conversation come budget time. The other thing that we're seeing, you know, now we've got in multiple states measles outbreaks, we've got outbreaks of tuberculosis in several states. Ohio and Kansas are experiencing outbreaks. We're seeing the bird flu outbreak, and of course, we're still battling with COVID. And the other thing on top of all these outbreaks that we see right here in the city of Westland and across the country is disparities in public health, especially in working-class communities like Westland. And one of the things that I've advocated for, for a number of years, and I'd like to continue to push this year, is for the creation of a public health department here in the city of Westland. I believe that healthcare is a human right, and that public health is something that, especially in the light of the pandemic that we just came out of the last couple of years, and what we're seeing now with, you know, TB and measles and bird flu outbreaks, public health is more critical than ever. And your zip code or the community you live in, or how much money you make, none of those things should be determinants in public health. It is a basic human right that I think we should be focused on. Now, of course, the city of Westland cannot be an insurance provider. We simply don't have the resources to do so. But I do think we have the resources and can develop the resources to create a public health department similar to what the county has and similar to what Mayor Abdallahamud has done in the city of Dearborn. So, I look to their model as a way forward for us. One program in particular that I would like to see us start here in the city, and I know I've had conversations with the chief, members in the Fire Department Union, my colleague, Pro Tem Sampe, as well as the creation of a community paramedicine program where we can do some kind of, you know, after-care visit for folks that have routine interactions with our Westland Fire Department and paramedics. Having preventative measures on public health is, first and foremost, obviously, good for the resident and the person that we are serving, to make sure that we are taking care of their public health, getting out in front of any, you know, needs, ailments, conditions that they may have. It also serves as a cost-saving measure that we're not going out two and three and four times, five times in a month or two months, seeing the same person over and over again. So, we're improving their public health and also offering taxpayers an opportunity as a cost-saving measure. So, this will be obviously a long-term discussion. I'm just putting this back out there as we're into the new year about the idea of creating a public health department. And with that, if anybody needs anything else from me, you're always welcome to reach out to me on my personal cell phone, call or text 734-890-2146. And you can find me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott. You can also email me on my city email. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?